Madam Clerk, do you want to call roll or do we want to just all state that we are present this way?
I can tell you, Mayor, that all council members are logged in and are physically present.
Thank you. With the quorum, we will conduct business. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Madam Mayor, make a motion that the agenda be approved as presented.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Hilst and second by Ms. Hoheimer. Any discussion? Council, take your vote.
No screen.
Approving the agenda.
No screen. I need to turn the screens on.
He's getting mad.
Yes, and I'll give it back to you. Screen, the screen is not even on.
Give us just a moment, please. There we go. Thank you. Motion passes seven zero. Chair would now entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes, please.
Madam Mayor, make a motion that the minutes for the October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four regular city council meeting be approved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hilst and second by Mr. Abel. Any discussion? Council, take your vote, please. Motion passes seven zero. We have now come down to item five on the agenda, which is public input. Anyone wishing to have their voice heard, please come to the podium, make sure that the mic is on, and state your name, please.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, I am Daniel C. Shipman, a proud native, foreign citizen, and retired firefighter for the City of Pekin, the celestial city. My residence is fourteen thirty Park Avenue, normally fifteen hundred at the corner of Garden and Park. Before I start, I must say, five-minute time limit really is disrespectful to the citizens of Pekin, especially with regard to items on the agenda. Citizen inclusion during the discussion of the agenda could be beneficial also.
Although it is two minutes more than the three minutes allowed by the Traffic Safety Committee. At the last council meeting, our minimum request of just two parallel parking spaces at the beginning of the last block of Park Avenue before Court Street was voted against four to three. The Hanson Engineering analysis was used as a reason not to reinstate parking, even though this would be the best use option to keep vehicles away from the most vulnerable. The analysis did not consider the request separately at the wide-open, unfettered area that specifically would encompass two parking spaces. Also, the idea that the city could be held liable in regard to a traffic layout is totally absurd. Public domain immunity. Another reason given not to allow parking is the approach to Court Street is not finished. This really has nothing to do with our limited request of only two parking spaces at the beginning of the block where there is immense safe distance to allow it. There is much more room for parking than on the north side where parking is already allowed. It is my understanding the new Court Street entry is not a deterrent at all but an enhancement. The third obstacle we force is a time limit with regard to future consideration of the matter that does not exist. The most vulnerable must be protected. This really is very simple and basic, safety first. Proverbs eight fifteen, leaders make laws that are fair. It could be done now. It is your responsibility now. Does anyone have the courage to do what is right, just and fair, and change their vote? Mayor, any comment? You're the leader of three people.
They seem to follow you. Do you have any comment? This is your five minutes. You've got two minutes and ten seconds left.
Okay, I had showed the picture earlier showing the immense room available for parking. You'll see the big yellow median painted in the middle, plenty of room for parking. And picture even, here's a yard sale going on with cars parked nearly to Court Street. I just happened to take the picture when an officer was going by and he saw no problem with it. This was this way for years. Here's a flooding problem that could be avoided at the intersection of Garden and Park and along the curb where the traffic is forced to go along the sidewalk. And here is a sinkhole that the traffic is making worse and worse. This, to me, is just common sense. It makes no sense not to put it back the way it was. I wish somebody would ask a question or have a comment to know that they are listening at least and considering what I am saying. No.
You have fifty seconds left.
I don't understand. I do not understand. God bless this celestial city.
You have thirty seconds left.
You can have my time. It's more usable to you than me.
Anyone else wishing to have their voice heard tonight?
You're talking to me?
Seeing none, public comment input is now closed. We have now come down to item six, consent agenda. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that the consent agenda be approved as presented, which includes the account payable report list through October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, the financial reports from September two thousand twenty-four, and receive and file expenditure for restocking sewer supplies for the street department. Be adopted.
Motion made by Mr. Hill, second by Ms. Hoheimer. Any questions, comments, concerns of the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move six point three off the consent agenda and add it to new business as eight point ten, please.
So six point three to eight point ten.
Correct.
Madam Clerk, did you get that? Council, take your vote. I think. He's telling us, hold on one moment. There we go. Motion passes seven zero. We have now come down to item seven, which is unfinished business. Chair would entertain a motion.
Yes, thank you. I move that ordinance number forty-two forty-two dash twenty-four slash twenty-five, requiring the registration of properties that are vacant or subject to foreclosure be approved.
Motion made by Mr. Nutter, second by Mr. Onkin. Mr. Dossi?
Thank you, Mayor. At the last meeting, council delayed this till this meeting. And city staff did meet with the par group and some of the realtors, local realtors. Very good conversation. They had some positive suggestions on this. Staff's just asking for a little bit of extra time to have this laid over until December ninth at the latest if it doesn't come beforehand, just to get the language drafted to give them an opportunity, the realtors an opportunity as stakeholders to have some say in that. And our goal is to have them speak publicly in support of it.
So I need a motion to have this laid over in a second.
I make the motion to move this to the December ninth meeting of the city council.
Second. Oops. It was made to lay over by Mr. Orick and second by Mr. Onkin. I'm sorry if I couldn't quite tell. Okay. So now we are going to take a vote on laying it over till December ninth. Madam Clerk, did you get all that? Okay. Council, take your vote. Okay, take your vote. Motion passes seven zero. We have now come down to item eight, which is new business. Chair would entertain a motion for eight point one, please.
Yes, I move that ordinance number forty-two forty-six dash twenty-four slash twenty-five, approving an amendment to the agreement for purchase and sale of real property with Illinois American Water for the city-owned property generally east of the current terminus of Brinkman Drive be approved.
Motion made by Mr. Nutter, second by Ms. Hoheimer. Mr. Dossi?
Thank you, Mayor. City Council previously approved ordinance number four-two-zero-three dash two-four slash two-five, approving the sale of city-owned property at the end of Brinkman Drive to Illinois American Water. That sale was for one point nine acres at nineteen thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents per acre for a final sale price of thirty-seven thousand one hundred and four dollars and thirty-eight cents. After initial site investigation, Illinois American Water has determined they need a little more space to properly install the new water tower as depicted on the attached plat exhibit. They have requested an additional zero point four seven five acres and are willing to pay appraised value for the additional land for a new total sale price of forty-six thousand three hundred and eighty dollars and forty-eight cents. Staff is recommending approval of the ordinance, and Josh Ray, economic development, is here for any questions.
Council, have any questions for Mr. Ray? Mr. Orick?
Yes. The paperwork on this, the survey work, the drawing of the deed, who will pay for that?
Kate, do you remember if it was us or them?
Illinois American pays for it.
Okay.
It's part of their due diligence.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Anyone else? Council, take your vote, please. Motion passes seven zero. Chair would now entertain a motion for eight point two, please.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance number four-two-four-seven dash twenty-four slash twenty-five, approving termination of purchase and sale agreement for the property at Fourteenth and Will will be approved.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Abel and second by Ms. Hoheimer. Mr. Dossi, would you like to fill us in on this one, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. In July of two thousand twenty-two, the city of Pekin entered into an agreement with Dan, or Dave Milam for the purchase of lots one through five of Firehouse subdivision plat. Due to change in timelines regarding the development and construction of the new fire station on Sheridan Road, it was determined to be in the best interest of the city to cancel this sale agreement and pay Dave Milam the two hundred thousand dollars per the agreement for the land on Sheridan Road, along with a twenty-five thousand dollar for termination of the sales agreement to cover costs incurred by Mr. Milam. This now relieves the city from being on any rushed timelines to construct the fire station and can be revisited with Mr. Milam at a later date. Staff is recommending approval.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Yes, I have one.
Oh, Ms. Hoheimer?
Mr. Dossi, does Mr. Milam have any desire to purchase that in the future?
If we are to a point and we move forward with the construction of the new fire station on Sheridan Road in the near future, he would still be interested in this. This is just relieving us from having any, I believe the original contract we were supposed to have built within five years. We're not going to be able to meet that timeline, so we're just removing that timeline right now.
Okay. Oh, Mr. Hilst.
So Kate, I got a question because I want to try to clarify some of this so the public has a little bit better idea of what's going on with this and to kind of clarify my position on it. So what's the repercussions for the city if this was not to get approved tonight? What would be the outcome of that?
The agreement as it exists right now, the purchase and sale agreement, has a closing date set for no later than March of two thousand twenty-five. So we'd be in a position where we could have defaulted on that agreement if we were not prepared to sell him the Fourteenth Street property at that time. That would give him, you know, options to pursue a breach of that agreement either by payment of money or seeking an order to force the sale.
So essentially then, there's language in that original contract that states that he has the option to take a two hundred thousand dollar buyout rather than receive the property where the fire station currently sits. And if we don't have a fire station built, which we're obviously not going to by March of two thousand twenty-five, and you don't pay him the two hundred thousand dollars and he takes over that property, then we would essentially have to rent that property back from him to operate our fire station. Correct?
Yes, but it's not a two hundred thousand dollar buyout. We still owe two hundred thousand dollars on the purchase of the Sheridan Road property, which we were going to basically pay with this property instead of cash. So now we still have the obligation to pay that in cash if we're not going to pay it with the transfer of the Fourteenth Street property.
Right. But he's still owed either that property where the fire station is or two hundred thousand dollars cash.
Yes, and yes, and if we did end up conveying the property to him, then yeah, we would potentially be in the position of having to lease back our fire station.
So if he doesn't get the two hundred thousand dollars, which is being asked to be approved tonight, you would essentially have to give him the property that the fire station sits on, and if you don't do that, then we're a breach of our contract and he could file a lawsuit against the city.
Yes, under the purchase and sale agreement, but that two hundred dollars, or two hundred thousand dollars is the remaining payment on the Sheridan Road properties that the city purchased as well, which we have a mortgage on. So if that two hundred thousand dollars is not repaid, then we're in breach of that mortgage potentially as well, and that relates to the Sheridan Road property, so yes.
So the rest, the rest of the-
Breach of both agreements.
Right.
Yes.
And so the rest of that payment for the Sheridan Road properties, I think it was four hundred and fifty, four hundred and seventy-five thousand, whatever that was.
I think it was four seventy-five.
Has that, has that all been paid?
Yes.
So the city owns all that property now? It's all been closed on?
Yes, that's all been closed. The deed's been transferred. The city owns the property, subject to the mortgage for the remaining two hundred thousand.
Did we combine all those properties into one property because those addresses that were there from the original contract don't exist anymore?
I believe it has now all been combined into one parcel. Is that right, Sue? Did we, did we get them all combined into one PIN with the county?
Do I have documentation of that?
Yeah. I think we did. Let me pull up the, because we just applied for the property tax exemption on it, so I can-
I know they were working on it. I don't know if it's done or not, but they were combining them.
Sheridan?
Yes.
I thought it was the Broadway property.
I was working on both of those. Yeah, so I have, when we applied for the property tax exemption on those Sheridan Road parcels, we applied under a single PIN number, which was, is the new PIN number assigned after it's all been combined.
So we were allowed to do that even without making that final two hundred thousand dollar payment or transfer of the property to finalize that whole agreement?
Yes, because we own the property. We just have a mortgage on it.
Okay.
Basically is what it is, so yeah.
Okay. Appreciate that. So as far as my stance on this, I didn't originally vote for this contract back when it was approved, simply for several reasons, but one, I think we overpaid for the property on Sheridan. It wasn't valued at that much. We never had an appraisal done on that property where the fire station sits. I questioned back then where we came up with the two hundred thousand dollar cash payment on what that property was worth. And all I was told was that's just what was negotiated between the two parties. However, with where we sit on this today, unfortunately, if we don't approve this, at least in my opinion, and I'm sure it's the opinion of most people in this room, I don't think it's a very smart idea to have to rent property back from a private owner that we got a fire station sitting on. That doesn't make sense to me. So obviously, we're not going to give that property away while that fire station is still up and operating. So that only leaves one choice without having a lawsuit filed against us, and that's to pay the two hundred thousand dollars. So I will reluctantly go ahead and vote to support that tonight, but I certainly don't like the way it's played out and it's, I'll just leave it at that. So Mr. Hill's comments make me think we're gonna, we have not paid the two hundred thousand, correct?
Correct.
So how did he pay, if there was a mortgage on that other property and we have ownership, there's no mortgage on it now?
No, we are the mortgage holder. We mortgaged the property. The city took out a mortgage against the Sheridan Road property for that extra two hundred thousand dollars from Mr. Milam. So Mr. Milam is the financier, the lender here of that two hundred thousand dollars. The city is the borrower. So it's, the city mortgaged that property because it was anticipated that we would, we weren't in a position where we could just do a swap because we weren't ready to give up the fire station property yet. So we, that's how it was arranged, and it was anticipated that that mortgage, that that final purchase price would be paid when we, when we did convey the fire station property.
So bottom line, then, we're gonna pay, now we have to pay the two hundred, we're gonna give him two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars?
Yes.
Not just twenty-five, but two hundred and twenty-five?
Yes.
Okay.
Council, take your vote, please. Motion passes seven zero. We have now come down to eight point three. Chair would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that resolution number two oh three dash twenty-four slash twenty-five, approving funding agreement for Court Street from eighth to tenth with IDOT be approved.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Abel, second by Ms. Hoheimer. Mr. Dossi?
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution is to approve the local public agency agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation in order to accept three million dollars in surface transportation program urban STU grant funding for Court Street from eighth to tenth. In order to accept this three million in grant funding, the city must commit to funding the remainder of the project, which is estimated at four point three million. This project is planned to be bid in January two thousand twenty-five as long as all land acquisitions could be completed in time. This project is planned to be completed concurrently with another project on Court Street from tenth to Stadium Drive. Staff is recommending approval, and Josie's available for questioning.
Council, have any questions for Ms. Esker?
Yes, I do. Josie, on this, the section that we're talking about, either how many more properties or a percentage do you have left to go, or is it at a hundred percent?
We've got four properties remaining for land acquisition. I'm assuming that's what you're talking about.
Thank you.
So if the bids have to be ended, he say by January of twenty-five?
So we're planning to put the project out for bid in January of twenty-five. That's correct. The only thing that could hold that back at this point is probably not having all of the land that's required for the project. So we are still working with four property owners to try to negotiate and purchase small strips of property, similar to what we did on the last section of Court Street, we have to do on these other two sections as well. So we're making good progress. Four properties remaining. Most of them are larger corporation-type properties, and they're just going through their legal processes. It's not necessarily that they're being difficult. It's just, you know, those big corporations have processes involved for these types of projects. They have engineers that look at the plans. They, you know, they have a due diligence period that they generally take a lot of time to process, so.
Okay, thank you.
I have one other question.
Sure, Mr. Nutter.
The three million dollars that we're gonna get from the state, have we gotten that, or are we gonna get it, and if we get it, where's it gonna go? What funds it going into?
We will actually never touch that money. So with these types of projects, the state will bid this project out.
Okay.
They will pay the contractor directly, and then we will reimburse the state our portion. So it's a grant for the project, but we don't touch it. Does that make sense?
I remember that from a couple of other ones. It's like-
Well, they're all different, so it is-
Which one is, or which one it is?
Yeah, it's tough to remember how it works because they're all different.
So you said the state's gonna bid that out?
It will be on the state bulletin, correct? That's how most of these types of projects are done.
So the section between eighth and tenth will be bid out separately? From that section between tenth and stadium?
Correct.
So potentially, you could have two different contractors doing a project together?
We will have probably two different engineers and two different contractors. It will be a lot of coordination, and that will be fun for me, so I will-
That's called teamwork.
It'll be a lot of work. It'll be more effort on staff's end to have two projects, for sure. That is by request of IDOT. They don't want to have to manage the other project. They don't want to have to review all of the documentation for the other project. They just want to review the part for the grant funding. So it makes sense from their end. The benefit to the city is that we don't have to pay for somebody to do all the documentation on that section from tenth to stadium. So that requires less engineering fees on that particular section, but it will require more coordination. So it's kind of a, it's probably a wash for us.
So-
That's how it's set up.
So that's a, so the three million dollars then, that's just an estimate of what the cost will be for that section?
The three million dollars is the grant.
Right, so let's say that the bid comes in lower than that grant. What happens to the excess money from that grant?
The estimate's four point three million. The city's responsible for at least thirty percent of the project with the grant terms. So if it comes in under four point three, which I would guess that it will probably come in over four point three, if I'm being honest, I don't think we'll have any issues. I think we will be able to utilize our full three million dollar grant.
And we are to come up with thirty percent?
Correct.
Okay.
If I could clarify something on Mr. Nutter's question. Even though we don't touch the money, we will have to book the three million dollars as if we did. So it still ends up touching our books because someone gave us three million dollars and we ended up with a road. So it does end up flowing through our books. It will flow through the budget, et cetera, even though we don't touch the cash.
Thank you for clarifying that, because we have like three or four others already that are sitting out there that we've never been...
And, and we have not been great about being proactive and booking that, you know, in advance the right way. I think we ended up waiting for auditors to force us to do the things, but now we have our, you know, eyes looking at the prize, and we're gonna do it right on the front end.
Sure. Josie, one other thing. So, in here, it's, we're gonna budget this in next year's budget, '25s, correct? To be budgeted in '25?
There is a small amount of funding budgeted in, in this fiscal year, which is, this is '25. So fiscal year '26, we will budget the remainder.
Okay, and it's coming out of BDD, is that correct?
It will have to come probably out of a variety of funds, would be my guess.
Okay.
And that will have to be determined during the budgeting period. I don't know exactly what funds, I would guess we'll have TIF, I would guess we'll have BDD. We might have some capital as well.
Okay, alright, thank you.
You're talking, you're talking about the extra 1.3 million?
Yeah, that's on, in front of us here, it's actually...
So that line item that it says is coming out of here may not be necessarily accurate?
So this project is planned to start in March. So there is a small time period in this fiscal year that this project will be taking place. We do have a portion budgeted under BDD for this fiscal year. For next fiscal year, which the majority of the project will be in next fiscal year, we will also need to budget the remain, the remaining funds.
Just for the section between 8th and 10th?
Well, we'll also hopefully be budgeting between 10th and Stadium.
Well, that was gonna be one of my other questions, what, with what I'm looking at right now, since we got about roughly 5.3 million remaining in this line item, what other projects are budgeted this year under this line item?
So, the remaining funds is just like the difference between what we have budgeted and what we have spent at this current moment in time. We can go back to what's budgeted under BDD if you, if you, you gotta...
Yeah, so the list of things coming up, plan to come out of BDD are a million dollars of engineering for Court Street construction, 2.7 million for the current phase of Court Street construction. Sorry, the first one I said was Court Street engineering, and then Court Street construction. 750K for the 8th to Stadium area, the other 250 is budgeted out of the southern.
So some of this money, if not all of it's already been allocated, it just hasn't been paid out?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, and a large portion of that goes towards this section of Court Street that we're working on. So that's another one of those weird projects where the state did the bid, they're paying the contractor directly, and we're reimbursing them. The state takes their time invoicing us. So we owe them a lot of money, they just haven't sent an invoice yet, so we haven't paid that out, but it will be coming.
Okay.
Mr. Hills, the, the budgeted remaining reserves in the BDD at the end of the current fiscal year was $208,000. So we were spending almost all of that was in reserves in BDD this year.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
I'm just gonna add in real quick. When we had our conversations last week, we told you about the new budget tool that we're gonna use that will have those line items in there, so you could see better where that's, that money will be coming from for these types of projects, these capital projects.
Okay. Counsel, take your vote, please. Motion passes 7-0. We're on a roll tonight. Chair, pardon me? I know, Chair, just jinxed myself. Chair, would entertain a motion for 8.4, please.
Madam Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 204-24/25 approving a professional service agreement with Moore &amp; Kerr for the survey and plating of a Luden property be approved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hoheimer, second by Mr. Abel. Mr. Dossie, would you like to fill us in on Moore &amp; Kerr?
Mayor, I'm gonna go ahead and have Josh, since this is his project, I'll let him go ahead and present.
Mr. Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. The council previously approved by resolution to use Moore &amp; Kerr as the surveying and plating company that's going to survey and plat the Thousand acre Luden property. It's a very large project, it's, you know, 16 parcels of weird sizes and, and shapes. So the physical survey work and then the plating work is gonna be relatively costly. They provided a rough estimate of $69,000 for the basic survey and plats, basically everything that we need at minimum to get the property annexed, and then an additional 20,000 for a full alto survey, which lays out everything that you would need for a future property sale, when we, we start selling property. So, you know, they don't want to hold themselves to that necessarily, because again, really large project, difficult to estimate. But, based on those two estimates, we drafted an agreement with a cost not to exceed 100,000, which is what would be available in the existing budget after last meeting's budget amendment, which took that cost, if you remember, from the 14 way down.
Yeah.
So, that's what's available. We assume it'll come in somewhere near that $69,000 number, because that's all we're gonna ask them to do at this point, but if it comes a little bit higher, they would have the flexibility to finish the project. So that's what we're asking for you today, staff does recommend approval.
Okay, any questions from counsel? I'm excited to move this forward, I have to say. This is a, a nice move. Yes, Mr. Oryx?
Josh, once they, if they make the 69,000, will they notify you? How, how will you know that they've, are you just gonna go by the billings they'll send in? I assume they'll send billings weekly, monthly?
So included in the packet there, they've got a, a list of their current fee schedule.
Yeah.
So, you know, based on the type of person working, and they'll just bill us monthly on their work.
Okay.
And so it'll be a cost not to exceed a certain amount in total. And if they think they're gonna exceed that, which I think would be very, very unlikely, then we would have to come back to counsel for approval for additional funding. But I don't foresee that happening.
I thought, I thought you had a 20,000 contingency, that 20,000 is your contingency then?
It's, that's not a contingency, so there's, there's kind of minimum survey, and then everything you need to make a property sale survey. Right now, we're just asking for a basic boundary line survey, and get all the parcels on record, so that we can annex the property and get it zoned and everything in the future. So in a future fiscal year, we would budget the additional dollars to go kind of the full nine yards and get everything done, so that we can start selling property in the next couple of years.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Nutter, did you have something?
Yes, I want to kind of add on to Councilmember Oryx. So, the increase at the beginning of the year, depending on, there's like a 5% for all the different rates and everything.
Right.
So you should know by, I would hope, mid-December where they stand, and possibly that 5% may throw them over, who knows? Don't know how long it's gonna take, but is that a standard in the, in the companies?
I mean, I'd ask Josie to comment on that if, I mean, I think 5% is pretty reasonable, but I don't know what she's seen otherwise.
Yeah, that is a standard line item in, in all engineering contracts. That doesn't mean they give every person in their company a 5% raise, that doesn't mean those hourly rates do go up by 5%, but it's basically them reserving the right to give their employees raise at that time period, and that's generally when you would see that in most engineering firms.
Of course, it depends on who's the person or what level's doing the surveys and everything, too.
Correct.
Correct. So, my other, last question is, these documents that they have, are they property of the city?
Yeah, once they turn, I mean, they're, they're gonna be ours.
Okay.
We're by, you know, paying them to do this for us, and then they'll be our documents.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that aspect, thank you.
No problem.
Well, like I said, this is moving this project forward, it's the first big step. So, any other counsel? Counsel, take your vote, please. Motion passes 6-1. Chair would now entertain a motion for 8.5, please.
Madam Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 205-24/25 authorizing purchase of a trench burner by Air Burner Inc. be approved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hoheimer, second by Mr. Abel. Mr. Dossie?
Thank you, Mayor. This was before council, a meeting or two ago. It's a resolution to purchase a trench burner from Air Burner Inc. The purpose of this unit is to help the city with tree removal, and will minimize costs. The city has come to a, come to a time when we'll have to start managing our storm damage events, and the intent is to use this piece of equipment. We're running out of space at the north plant, and the only alternative is to start hauling it away to the landfills, which will be costly. There's a breakdown of the costs in the packet, the purchase of the equipment. For the purchase of the equipment, the city will also be able to help surrounding communities with any storm events, charging potential nominal fee. And the piece of equipment also meets EPA requirements for burning materials. A one-off project that does need to be addressed sooner than later is the tree line at the airport. That's approximately a mile long, that has to be removed to meet the FAA site requirements. And I have Dean and Mike Cruz from the airport to speak a little bit on that project.
Dean, would you like to say something, or?
Yeah, I sure would. So I've been working with Michael Schmidt, he's the sales rep for Air Burner, the company. And as we know, in the last month or so, we've had two major hurricanes at the south of Florida, in the central part of Florida. So I, he called me last Thursday, I touched base with him again today, I couldn't get him Friday. He sent me a quote, that price of that piece of equipment went up $9,000. They burnt through their inventory during the hurricane events. They're mass production right now, trying to meet demands, so the prices went up another nine grand. He did negotiate shipping with me today and dropped that $1,200 from 48 to 46. So the grand total now is about, let me look it up here real quick. It's $73,376 for the purchase of that equipment with shipping. So there would have to be amendment to the price this evening, if we vote on it.
Dean, read that, read that number again, would you?
73,378. The shipping cost was 4,800, he reduced it to 36.
Counsel?
Hold on a minute.
Oh.
So the original request is for 65,468, and it went up 9,000?
Correct.
For the piece of equipment, so that's 74,000. 468.
But I reduced the shipping cost.
Hold on.
That, that's what it went down, that's where the price went down.
So that's the total, including? Tell me what the total price is with shipping, is it 73,378?
76.
76.
Oops.
Yes.
I had that, and then I, then I heard eight.
Let me pull up the original quote real quick.
Okay. So Dean, was it originally 65,468 plus shipping?
Yes, no, with shipping.
That was with shipping, okay. And, and this is to be used for our community, right? It's not for us to send to North Carolina, or Florida, or Tennessee, or, okay.
The surrounding communities can lease it or rent it from us for...
Absolutely.
Yeah, so to me, that's...
So United Rentals, just to let you know, United Rentals has one, it's been in Iowa for a year. We, Bob talked to him, and he said the likelihood of that thing even coming back is virtually not gonna happen. And not even maybe next year, that they rented that indefinitely, and the cost of that is around 6,000 a month.
To me, it'll pay for itself in a short time, just letting surrounding communities use it, plus you keep...
In a year's time, we've paid for it. If I rent that for 12 months, we would've paid for it.
Yeah.
Okay, any other counsel? Oh, excuse me.
Since this deals with fire, I'd like to ask, I see Trent isn't here, but Tony's here. Have you looked at this, Tony, and put certain requirements for the safety of having a fire there?
I haven't looked at this one specifically, but we have had one in the past. The city has used one before in the past to burn at the, the back of the Cook Street area. And, you know, we worked with them at the time, just to make sure that the site is, is appropriate. So since this will be mobile, we would just make sure that they're following the right, you know, use guidelines wherever they place it, since it's case by case.
The fire department will write the use guidelines, there would be standard operating procedure for the people using it?
We would use whichever, you know, device that they end up with, we would follow, most likely, the manufacturer's guidelines for distances and things like that. And I have, have no doubt we could work with Public Works to make sure, if we have additional concerns, they would...
So they don't have to have anybody on site to make sure nothing's going wrong, it just runs on its own, there's...
I think it has to be monitored, but they will have, their staff will be doing that. I don't think we'll leave it just to...
But this'll burn 24 hours a day, won't it?
Without any attendance.
The pits will, yes.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, so they have to have somebody there 24 hours?
No, no, I mean, they'll have to check up on it and make sure, you know, per the, the guidelines.
Okay.
It just won't be a firefight.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what kind of liability will we have in this? I, let's say it's, you're out in North Beacon, and some little kid rides his bike into it. Are we liable, do we have to put a fence up around it, or?
We're any more liable than we are with anything that we do. I mean, no more, more liable than putting a truck on the road, hitting a child.
Yes, it is, I mean, because it's, this is unattended.
It is not 100% unattended, and it's gonna be a secure area.
I, I think at the last council meeting, that when we discussed this, it was gonna be at the north plant, where it would be a secured area, it's not a public transportation area, so to speak. They would have it at the airport for that tree line, but I think the, the, the idea was, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that it was gonna come back to the north plant, and it would be secured in that area.
But there's a, were you gonna put it inside where the chips are now, or you?
Correct.
Well, that's...
We're putting a gate up there, Lloyd.
Oh, you're gonna put a gate up?
Yes, we are.
But there's still, there's the hill, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's accessible for the honest people.
Okay.
Not accessible for the honest people.
And then, have you got a signed agreement up for these other cities to use it, or municipalities?
I have not, and you know what, what happens, unfortunately, if we have a natural disaster that's nearby, would they, people would reach out to us, but I mean, I haven't got, you know, haven't talked to any other municipalities, and when those events happen, we would surely negotiate with them, you know?
So it'd just be an oral agreement, or?
And we can have a document written up, however you would like it.
Okay, well, I, I would just think that we would have a written document that they could sign, stating what the cost is gonna be and everything else, so we know, and that any liability in that case would fall on them, we would have a waiver of liability.
And we could have, you know, okay, draft something up that would have liability clause.
I think that comes after the purchase.
For something like that, if you're gonna make it available to other municipalities, it'd be easy to draft up like a form rental agreement that they could just sign if they needed it.
Okay.
Okay.
I got, I have a question.
Excuse me, Mr. Nutter?
I wrote down this number from the last time, and this is for the accounting guys, because under machinery and equipment that we currently have that listed as, there's no money budget. So I got this number, 587001, and I don't think I wrote that down, just made it up, it had to come from you guys, as being machinery and equipment large under capital?
Right, it, it would be going against, so this year's budget, though there are lines that have individual, you know, accounts, like equipment, it goes against the entire capital budget of the fund? So you, you book it in the correct line, and if you have extra capacity in the other lines that are capital-related, that's what truly it's going against?
Well, the machinery and equipment doesn't show capital.
Well, machinery and equipment is part of capital.
Yeah, you've got that as a separate line with no number, that's why I'm asking. I'll, I'll talk to you later about that.
Sure, yeah, happy to walk you through the specifics.
So I want to go to the next step, so another item on the agenda tonight is to use this piece of equipment at the airport to get rid of all the trees.
Correct.
So, is all that funding go actually under sewer, or should be split up to go under the airport?
So, the, the airport's use of this equipment will be very short-term. I mean, it'll be, we're cutting down these set of trees, and I'm hoping that we don't have to cut down another set of trees for another 20 years, or something like that.
That'll be all of them.
Right, we're cutting down all the trees. So, the airport will be charged, like we would be charging, for instance, another municipality or something like that in the event of a, of a disaster, and we were renting to them. So we're in essence, public property is going to rent it to the airport, so the airport will get charged. But they're not buying the thing, because they're not gonna use it long-term.
That's kind of like, it's a rental fee.
Totally makes sense, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, Mr. Hils.
So I didn't see any language in here on what type of warranty this piece of equipment has. Am I missing that?
Let me look in the quotes, Mr. Hils. It's in there somewhere, I'll have to find it.
So you don't know what the warranty is on it?
I, off the top of my head, I can't, I.
I've read through that several times, I can't find it.
Yeah.
I think that'd be a good piece of information.
Let me look.
When you're gonna spend over seventy thousand dollars for a piece of equipment.
I, I understand.
To know what that is. And what if it does?
I wanna say, I wanna say it's twelve months with parts and labor. But I, I don't wanna misquote myself.
Right, 'cause I can't verify that, but.
One year for defense and parts and ownership.
Yeah.
One year?
What? What packet page is that on?
Page four. Oh, six. D page, uh, I heard, uh, the structure specifications.
I keep losing everything I click on.
What page? I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Page four, he said, specifications.
Yeah, that's the one I had. If you go under the, uh, McPherson Systems Overview, the operations down to page two. Or, oh, it's not. Oops, sorry, that was, that's, sorry, that was the other one. Well, they were, they were here.
Okay, what if, what if something happens that that does have to be? Even outside of the warranty? If that needs to be repaired, what's the process of that? Does that have to be shipped somewhere to be repaired? Does somebody travel to the location where it's at?
I'm sure if it's something that's catastrophic that they would pay for the shipping if it's still under warranty. That's usually the way things work.
No, I'm saying even if it was, was not in warranty and, and it needs repaired, we would have to ship that somewhere to have it repaired?
Not necessarily, depending on what happens. We could, we could either fix it in-house or we could contact, uh, you know, one of their sales reps to tell us the repair.
Okay, and how did? How did we come up with the determination to allocate this under stormwater? I don't understand the correlation. What does cutting trees down out at the airport have to do with stormwater?
The trees at the airport don't, but the trees in town do.
In what, in what way?
Part of this process is the chipping and the leaf is our biggest problem child at our north plant. And, uh, in order to minimize storage, that's part of the process of this burner, is to burn that material instead of constantly, what we're doing right now, in fact, we're gonna do it this week, is push it around to try to make space. And if I can minimize that cost by burning it for, you know, less than a tenth of the cost, that's the reason for it. And that's just material that goes into our storm sewer.
I, I don't understand that explanation at all.
Leaves and limbs and?
If you have, if you have a tree that blows over in a storm or it's just dead and you go cut it down, how is that related to stormwater?
He just said that leaves and limbs get into the sewer.
I heard what he said, that still makes no sense to me. There's all kinds of things that go into the sewer. You're, you're cutting a tree down, that tree wasn't balking the sewer.
Okay.
I don't understand it at all, how that's being allocated into the, I, I got my own ideas why it is, but I don't understand it.
So as a clarification, I'm gonna ask this one last time to make sure the number is correct. The number is seventy-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-six?
Correct.
That's what I wrote down.
I'd like to make, amend this to not exceed seventy-four thousand dollars.
Can we have a second to that?
Second.
So amendment was made for it not to exceed seventy-four thousand by Mr. Nutter and second by Mr. Orick. So now we are going to vote on the amendment. Sue, do you have that amendment? Counsel, take your vote. Motion passes seven zero. Now we are, will take a vote on the purchasing and for the purchase not to exceed seventy-four. Is that correct, Kate?
Yes, now you would vote on the motion as, or on the, motion as amended, yes.
Okay. Motion as amended, did you get that, Madam Clerk? Counsel, take your vote. Motion passes five two. Chair would now entertain a motion for eight point six, please.
Madam Mayor, I move that resolution, resolution number two zero six dash twenty-four slash twenty-five, authorizing purchase of a new three-quarter ton pickup and plow for public properties be approved.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Orick and second by Ms. Hoheimer. I am so sorry. What did I tell you? Sorry, Mr. Onkin. It was seconded by Ms. Hoheimer. Uh, Mr. Dossi, would you like to fill Mr. Onkin and us on this?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is for the approval of a new public property vehicle. This vehicle will be used to help with snow removals whilst other needs in this department. Uh, it is replacing a nineteen ninety-seven three-quarter ton truck that was passed down from the fire department some years ago and is no longer deemed roadworthy. The cost of this vehicle will come out of contingency money we have in this department and the plow cost from Koenig will come from the equipment line item and properties. Staff recommended the vehicle from Ray Dennison, uh, be approved and, as we know, that is a local vendor.
Okay. Any, uh, council member have any questions?
So I'd like to add to this also. Sorry.
Nope, that's okay.
Um, I wanna do some comparisons. Um, I did reach out to Marl Brothers. Um, they finally got back with me today. They had a two thousand twenty-three that's a comparable to the Ufting quote of fifty thousand. Uh, their quote was fifty-three, nine eighty-nine with a shorter bed. We would like to have a longer bed. So we did get a state bid price from Marl Brothers. Um, the Dennison truck is a standard cab. The Ufting truck is a super cab, which is four-door with, uh, so about a hundred dollars difference. So, or I'm sorry, a thousand dollars difference.
Okay. Does Counsel have any questions?
I have a few questions. So Dean, you're buying this, so the street department won't be doing the snow removal?
So this is for properties? So like the church parking lot, the Woosley parking lot, um, City Hall parking lot?
So the street department won't be operating the truck?
No.
Okay. Because I just seem to recall a few months ago, we bought them a new pickup. Why we wouldn't outfit it with a snow blade for the?
We did, no, one ton. That's for alleyways and smaller roads.
They don't have time to do this then? We have to have a separate truck?
So that's properties, it's not streets?
So we have spent a lot more money because of that?
That's your decision.
I, I think the difference are, i- in the past, we've contracted out all the public properties. So now you have a public property department and pu, and so instead of having the contract, uh, with the snow removal company, Public Properties has been handling City Hall and, and some of the other, um, parking lots, church lots and everything else.
So last year during the snow and ice events, we were waiting till the routes were done to do, luckily, we didn't have that much snow. They were borrowing a one-ton when they could.
Well, I can remember years ago, there was a mechanic down this, uh, area there. The mechanic, Bob, he, I can't remember his last name, he used to do the snow removal for all of our parking lots. Even though he was just a mechanic. I mean, seems to be, we're not saving money where we can and having crossover work from departments, it seems like.
Well, the union won't allow that right now.
Dean, will that be able to be kept in the garages across the street?
It could.
So I was thinking, as big as that four-stall garage is, it would.
Sure.
So approximately, how many hours a year do you think this truck will run for this purpose?
Well, when you tell me how much snow we're gonna have, I'll let you know.
I know, but on the average, twenty hours, forty, fifty?
No, they're gonna use it for other meat purposes. The truck that we're replacing is the one that we use to go around and take care of all the city maintenance with. They put the water, uh, water tank in there and they go, she goes and waters flowers. We take all our brush in that truck right now when we go, they do tree trimmings at properties. They haul material with it. So I mean, it's not just, just gonna sit till it snows.
So total hours used a year?
Yeah.
I mean, a hundred hours, two hundred, three hundred?
Heck of a lot more than that.
Five hundred hours?
It'll be used every day a week.
For a specific purpose?
For anything.
Just driving around picking up stuff or?
Sure.
Okay. And who would do that? Who's the public property person that's in charge of that?
Ryan Kraus.
Okay. I got a couple.
Yeah.
So. First of all, I guess my first question is, why wasn't this brought up during budget discussion? Because this wasn't budgeted.
It was budgeted. At the time when we had the discussion and why it's in contingency is we didn't know whether or not we were gonna purchase the Woosley building. So we held that back and didn't budget for a vehicle. And Bob, during that discussion item, we decided to put fifty thousand dollars in contingency in case that project, that property did get purchased and we could have the money out there, we needed the vehicle.
Well, to me, if it was budgeted for, it would've been brought up, which I don't recall having any discussion about that. It would be allocated in a line item for vehicles and not under contingency. I've questioned all these expenses in these contingency items in the past and why some of them are so large. I've been told that those contingency line items are supposed to be for emergency expenses or maybe something unforeseen down the road, not for vehicles. What are we doing with the old truck?
Gonna sell it.
Huh?
Going to sell it.
On the auction?
Yes, sir.
That's all I have, thank you.
Counsel, take your vote.
Well, I'm at the end, you didn't see me.
Sorry, 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 no, I was looking this way.
Lean back.
I was looking.
I don't have a problem with purchasing the truck. What I have a problem with is all these account items. And especially when we're taking money out of a line item that says, "Snow removal, salt." I'm sorry. That's a stretch because it's a snow blade to take it out of salt. So I will have a private conversation with our accounting department as far as the general accounting rules as to where these items ought to be going. So just wanna go on record for that aspect of it, on these line items. And I, I concur with Rick too. Th- this truck has been a disaster for a couple of years. No bad breaks, bad this, bad that, and we pumped a lot of money into repair. That's why I don't have a problem, because it's a safety issue as much as anything else. So with that said.
So can I ask you?
Sure.
You know, if, if they're plowing snow, um, why do you have a problem with it being snow and salt plow?
Because the line item originally, past years, is to purchase salt.
To purchase salt?
Yes.
Okay.
And that line item basically. Where was I? I think it's ten thousand or something like that.
I didn't know it was in the purchase.
Yeah, we, and that's a separate issue altogether, so.
Okay.
But I'll talk to the finance department on a couple of these, so, thank you.
Counsel, take your vote, please. Motion passes six one. Chair would now entertain a motion for eight point seven, please.
Madam Mayor, I move resolution number two zero seven dash twenty-four slash twenty-five, meaning this one here, twenty-six enterprise lease agreements for new police vehicles be approved.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Onkin, second by Ms. Hoheimer. Mr. Dossi?
Thank you, Mayor. The Police Department is requesting the approval of lease agreements with Enterprise Fleet Management for the lease of six new twenty-twenty-five Ford interceptor police vehicles. The leases will include six Mark squad cars with two of the new squads outfitted with full cages and four will be half cages. These leases are part of the ongoing fleet program with Enterprise aimed to reduce overall fleet cost for the Police Department. Uh, there is a breakdown under the financial impact, uh, section and Chief Ranny is available with any questions.
Does anyone have a question for Mr., or Chief Ranny?
I have a couple.
Mr. Orick?
Just curiosity, why some of them with half cages and some full cages?
So some of it is equipment related and then also we are getting, sometimes getting the half cages to better fit taller officers. Uh, then we also have FTOs where we're sitting two officers in the vehicle all the time. So, uh, we're just, as far as fit goes, that's what we're, we're rotating in, half cages with the full cages.
Okay. And so it's easy to, the squad, I assume these are patrol vehicles, you call them squad?
Yes, sir.
How many patrol vehicles do you have?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three patrols?
Yes.
And the number is because of what?
We have two, the program that we run is two officers assigned to each squad car. So there's an eight-hour break, so the squads don't run for twenty-four hours a day.
Okay. So is that why, I've got a list here of the vehicles for the Police Department. If I'm, recall correctly, you have fifty-six employees, correct?
We have fifty-seven police officers. We have sixty-eight employees.
I'm, well, I'm talking about the ones that would be sworn officers or whatever?
Yes, we have.
Okay.
We have, but this, the enterprise contract has a lot more vehicles than just the sworn officers.
Yeah, you have sixty-four vehicles.
We have sixty.
According to the list I got.
Not in, not in the Police Department.
Well, they're all listed for police here.
We have, we do have the contract with Enterprise, so everything with the city is under that, but.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah.
Okay. The list, the list I was given's got sixty-four vehicles on it, it says police on all of them.
We, when we charge it, it gets charged to the various departments that the, is driving the vehicle, which is not the same as the, the, you know, we have one lease, if we had, you know, five leases for five departments.
Well, then I've got the list for street and public property and everybody else, they're all broke out.
And, and when you got that list, if that's the one that came in September, um, when we talked, there may have been some vehicles on there that had not been picked up yet by, um, Enterprise. Cause as they change out with the new vehicles, they pick up the old vehicles.
Okay.
But they'll remain on our list until they're picked up.
And I'm trying to recall that hail damage, how did we ever come out on that? Did that cost us extra money or?
No, we hadn't taken delivery of the vehicles at that time. What it did cost us was we had to keep vehicles a lot longer than we anticipated, which they were old vehicles and so we had to spend money on maintenance and repairs that weren't anticipated. But as far as the damage to the cars, that, we had not taken delivery, so we actually did not own them at all.
Okay, thank you.
So do we have all those hail damaged vehicles in operation finally?
So we have them all, they are all fixed. We have, most of them have been outfitted. Uh, we are still waiting for some of them to be outfitted at the outfitter, so the, the emergency equipment installed.
Okay. So you're a good lead-in person, so the project that you want for this, we have to get that in because of the build schedule with the manufacturer, correct?
That's correct.
And the vehicles that we're taking the equipment out of, can you kinda explain to the public what you do with that?
Sure. So that's one of the benefits of utilizing the Enterprise program is we will strip them down. We'll take the equipment out, put those into the new vehicles if we can reutilize, uh, the equipment. Some, some years we can, some years we can't, based on if they change the actual inside of the vehicles. But we strip those down and then Enterprise sells those on our behalf and that money goes towards crediting our accounts, so they take that money off of the monthly bill. and that money goes towards crediting our accounts, so they take that money off of the monthly bill. And so the, when we get a new car in, we rotate an old car out and then we get the sale price of that that goes towards our overall cost.
Thank you for that explanation because I've been asked that and I went, I have no clue, but we're gonna find out, so, thank you.
That's how leasing programs do work, um, Mr. Nutter. Yeah, yeah, that's true. Um, any other counsel? Counsel, take your vote, please. Motion passes seven-zero. Chair would now entertain a motion for eight point eight, please.
Madam Mayor, I move resolution number two zero eight dash twenty-four slash twenty-five. Approving the contract for tree removal at Pekin Municipal Airport to BEB Excavating Incorporated be approved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Anken, second by Mr. Abel. Mr. Dossie?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this resolution is to award the contract for the removal of the airport's south tree line to comply with FAA requirements. Staff has received three estimates for the removal of trees on the south side of the Pekin Airport. The first two estimates, uh, from BEB and Topless Tree Service, which are enclosed, assume the use of a city-owned air curtain. Topless also included an additional charge if the air curtain is not purchased. The last estimate by Miller and Sons did not account for the use of an air curtain. Staff recommends awarding the contract to BEB contingent on the approval of the purchase of the air curtain and staff is recommending awarding the contract to BEB pending air curtain approval. And I have Dean and Mike Cruz here for any questions.
Would you like to say anything before I turn it over to counsel? Counsel, have any questions?
Fire away, Mike. Explain this whole thing. After I called you, I kinda, still kinda understand it, but don't understand it, so...
So...
That's why I figured maybe you could fill us in.
So every three years, the FAA, um, inspects the airport in May.
Is your mic on?
It was on. There we go. I'll talk closer. Um, so every three years, the FAA comes and does a safety inspection of the airport. Um, they conducted one in May. Um, the airport was found to be generally in, in good condition except for the, uh, south tree line um, and the taxiway lines, which we've, uh, taken care of. But, uh, and then the, uh, the farming plat. So, the south tree line, trees, obviously, over the years, we've, we've cut them down, um, taken care of, uh, a lot of the trees on the north side of the property. Um, the south tree line has grown up. It's been noted on a few of the inspections that, um, they were either getting taller or tall and I believe that at those times, they took care of some of those trees. Um, but basically, the entire tree line on the south property line has exceeded the, uh, seven-to-one side, uh, um, uh, height requirement. And basically, um, just to explain this, um, the center line of the runway, we have, um, requirements that things not be certain heights and this is a seven-to-one, so every seven feet horizontally from the center line, you can go up one foot for, um, any obstacles. So our buildings have to be back so far and that's all determined by the FAA. So, um, the south tree line, the trees could be a maximum of twenty-three feet and, uh, several of the trees have grown to be forty, fifty, seventy feet tall. So, um, they, they basically, um, are now in, in the way and we are, um, not in compliance with the side slope transition requirements and we need to remove the trees.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. So approximately, how many trees are we talking about?
There's probably about a hundred trees, I would estimate.
Are they all over at the boundary line or?
They're right on the fence line. The fence line was never maintained over the years and, uh, you know, hackberries and, uh, elms and, um, different trees like that have grown up and they were just never maintained over the, over the years.
Because I recall a few years ago, the farm that rid of the land down there, part of it is because we gave them a reduced price, was to remove those trees.
Not on the south, that was, uh, there were other trees, I think, that were part of that agreement that was not on the south tree line.
So what do we do if they're right across the boundary line?
So, um, there's what's called an aggravation easement. Um, basically, the FAA, uh, we would need to work with the landowners to, uh, trim those trees down um, and get permission. Most of the trees that are probably close enough, um, they're probably not gonna grow much taller. But the FAA says everything that's on our property needs to be addressed. So, you know, if we were ever to build a crosswind runway, um, part of that, that process would be, um, to, to buy an ag, an air easement, basically, um, to, um, keep those landowners from erecting anything that would hinder the op, safe operation of the airport.
Because don't our runway just run east and west? Do we have any north-south?
We don't have any north-south right now. There is long-term...
But the trees are over on the south side.
Correct, yes, they're on the south.
So they really, from flight purposes, they don't come into play?
Actually, they do. So...
In what way?
So if you're flying on instrument approach, uh, into the runway and the pilot was not on the center line and they broke out of the clouds, uh, with less than a quarter mile visibility or less than a hundred foot, um, and they were staring at, uh, trees, two hundred feet south of the center line, uh, which, you know...
Okay.
Can't happen.
And that's where the trees are two hundred feet over to the south?
They're about three hundred foot to the south.
Three hundred foot.
So, it's, it's an issue and that's why the, the FAA has those, those requirements that we, we maintain.
So the trees are actually farther away than the buildings?
Uh, no, they're about the same.
About the same?
About the same. It's, it, you know, I, I, off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you what the, uh, the exact footage from the center line is on the south fence.
Because some of the buildings are taller than what we have to keep the trees under?
Yeah, the buildings are actually further north than the south fence line. We actually own more property on the north side than we do on the south side.
Yeah. Okay.
The buildings, I think, at the building setback line where they currently are building could be like thirty-five feet tall.
Okay.
Thank you.
I got a couple of questions that pertain to the contractual side of this, so Mike, if you or Dean clarify this. So it's not only cutting the trees down, but it's also removing the stumps?
Correct.
What if the fence gets damaged? Who repairs the fence?
The contractor's supposed to repair the fence.
And that's included in the bids? Okay?
Yes.
The next step is, after they're cut down, you got trees, you got stumps. What guidelines were given to the contractors to remove the trees and the stumps?
So the, the original plan was, uh, you know, the thought process was to use an air burner, um, instead of trucking them because regardless of where we truck them, if we had to truck them to the north side, um, of the airfield where we could potentially store them until later date, that all adds to the cost because you have to drive two miles, two, I'm sorry, two miles around the runway. You can't just cut across the runway with heavy trucks. So the plan was to, um, find a location down there to use the air burner and actually burn them in a trench, which will require, uh, the heavy equipment to remove the stumps, root rake, and return it to a farmable state.
So is that the plan?
Uh, currently, that's, that's, that's the plan.
That's the current plan, burning it at the airport?
Correct.
Okay. After we burn it at the airport, is there any EPA requirements to get rid of any of the debris, the ash or whatever? Be it bury it, sell it?
So, the air burners, there's very little left from the air burners. Um, there are some, if there is any debris left, um, it will be very minimal, I think, uh, from stumps. I mean, these things give a complete burn, uh, for the most part. They would, you know, whatever small amount of debris is left, which I'm assuming would not be very much, would be hauled off.
That's all I've got.
Any other, uh, Mr. Hilst?
So my first question is, why did we go out and get estimates rather than not sending out an RFP?
The first estimate that we received was from BEB, which was under the procurement policy. The other estimates that we got, we have to get to, what the second one was from, um, Topless Tree Services, who our contract is doing in tree, in town storm and tree removal. Um, the third one actually reached out to four, didn't get a fourth. Um, I didn't anticipate him being that expensive. But by procurement, we needed two quotes. But the first quote was under the procurement policy, so...
Well, what if the first two estimates you got were, were over that? How do you know what order those are gonna come?
Then we would've put it out for an RFP.
So two out of the three required an RFP, but we didn't go out for one. Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. So my next question kinda piggybacks off something that was brought up earlier about renting this thing at the airport. So it's being charged to a public property line item. Why isn't it being charged to the airport since that's where the work's being done? We gotta pay for it anyway.
So Bob and I had a discussion. The public property has the finances right now to pay for this. What we're gonna do is when the, when, whenever this was awarded, what the cost is, public property will pay for it and then it'll be a transfer in the next budget cycle to pay for it out of the airport's budget. Since we didn't allow any money, we didn't know this was during budget cycle last year, we didn't put any money in for this line item, so property's gonna pay for it. And throughout, any property that I've done in this city has come out of properties. Any improvements, the interior, uh, the remodel of the airport hangar on the inside came out of properties. So it makes sense to come from there, but Bob wants to put it in the airport cost, which we will change that in the next budget cycle.
And that is a gray area. I'll give you that when it comes to where you're charging and allocating some of these expenses to when it comes to public property. But to me, we've got certain public property that don't really have a designated department, like the Colson Building, just for an example. So if you were to do work there or possibly if you went across the street here to the funeral home and did some work, those would probably fall under public property because they don't really have a designated department. The airport is a designated department. The street department is, the fire department, those are all designated departments. Even though they're all considered public property, if they're the ones creating the expense, that's where it should be allocated to, to me. That's just my own personal opinion. So it also says the requested amount is three hundred thousand dollars. Is that just a typo?
It's gotta be a typo. I don't know where that came from.
Yep.
I have no idea.
Budgeted amount, remaining funds, and then the requested amount, all say three hundred thousand.
I don't, I don't know.
That is correct.
Yeah. No, it's eighteen thousand, eighteen thousand eight eighteen or something like that.
Eighteen thousand eight hundred and ten. Shouldn't that be the amount requested?
Yes, that should be the amount.
Would appreciate an amendment to that Scrivener's error.
And then, something else that I'm gonna ask about that I didn't have written down, but now that that trench burner's been approved and you were talking about how they didn't have any left because they sold them all and that's supposedly directly related to this agenda item because they were planning on using that, what's the timeline on the city getting that delivered? Because that's probably gonna directly affect the timeline on when this project starts, correct?
Mr. Schmidt told me today that he can have me one in two weeks. The current production rate, if this passes tonight, they're, they're making them as fast as they can to meet production schedules and I can have one in two weeks.
Okay, so then, is this contractor, are they familiar with how to operate that piece of equipment? Do they need to be trained on that? How?
Absolutely.
Absolutely what?
They know how to operate that piece of equipment.
Okay. Are they required to sign any type of liability papers if they damage that while they're using it?
I mean, we can have Kate draft something up if we want to.
So then we're gonna wait then until they... We're gonna wait until we receive that piece of equipment before we determine the start date of this project?
We can start tearing trees down at any time.
So we would, yes, we can start any time.
Leave them lay out there as long as you want after we cut them?
Yeah, the crops have been harvested, um, so we can actually drop them. The, the preference would be to hopefully wait for a, we'd, we'd, we'd like an early freeze so that the ground, we don't tear up the, uh, the ground as much as possible. The trees will skid a lot easier. Um, the easiest thing to do, instead of just cutting them down, is to actually drop them wholesale with an excavator. Um, it typically pulls out the stumps, um, with the tree at the same time, so then they push the entire tree into the, uh, into the pit. So, um, the idea is, would be to hopefully, by the time this arrives and we get all our, our ducks in a row, um, it'll be, you know, late December, early January and then we can go ahead and, and, uh, start this. Frozen ground would be the most ideal situation.
Okay.
So...
That's all I have. Thank you.
Hold on, Mr. Nutter has something.
This is something else. So in the previous discussion about the trench burner, I heard that the city was gonna operate the trench burner. Is that correct?
At North Pekin.
So, we're gonna have an outside contractor operating our piece of equipment. So I hope we have a legal document to cover that prior to anything being started.
And we talked about that in the previous conversation. If anybody used it, we would have a liability document written.
So even if it gets here in two weeks and we don't have that document, there's not gonna be any trench burning.
So they have liability insurance themselves and so do we.
Okay.
That's part of the requirement.
I just...
It's part of the requirement to work for the city.
Okay. So we have all those documents in these estimates that they have the insurance and everything from B and B or BEB?
We can get that for you.
Pardon?
We will get that for you.
Well, that should be part of the requirement to get the quotes or RFP or whatever. Getting it afterwards, I'm sorry. Let's be a little more professional and get them ahead of time.
Mr. Ork, you had something.
Well, I was gonna amend the, I make the motion to amend the requested amount in, uh, financial impact to eighteen thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. Second.
That, I mean, that's just in the, the council memo. It's not part of the actual proposed resolution. The proposed, the, the motion on the floor is to approve the quote submitted by BEB, so...
Even though the amount requested on the document here is three hundred thousand?
That, so, yeah, so that request for council action is a memo to the council. It's informational only. The actual resolution that is proposed doesn't actually have an amount in the resolution. It just adopts the BEB excavating ink, um, quote, estimate.
Sorry, I was pulling this up. Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, counsel, take your vote, please. Oops, I was asked to take it again.
Yeah, came back again.
Do it again. Motion passes six-one. Chair would now entertain a motion to, for, uh, eight point nine, please. Oh, a discussion. Okay, sorry. I, I now, I now see that.
I have Lloyd's name there, but...
Okay, okay, no worries. Okay, Mr. Dossie, would you like to start, um, this budget discussion or?
I'm gonna have Eric, uh, lead this off.
Eric, thank you. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just waiting for the PowerPoint to come on.
Okay. Mr. Nutter, we probably should've put, um, six point three above this one. We probably should've done that first. Should we stop this and do, uh, eight point ten and move it to eight? Yeah, eight point eight A? Or B? Or B? Let's do that, if you, if you don't mind, and you'll get ready for your presentation. So now I am going to ask Mr. Nutter. We put it down as eight point ten, but do we wanna change it to eight point eight A?
All right.
We can go out of order, all right. So we'll leave it at eight point ten. And Mr. Nutter, I'm gonna turn it over to you since you pulled this one.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I move that we receive and file expenditure for restocking sewer supplies for the street department be approved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Nutter and second by Mr. Oric. Mr. Dossi, do you want to say anything on this since it was pulled?
Yeah, just a quick description of it. This was the purchase is to restock materials from what has been used for the season regarding sewers. Corr Maine is in Washington as the closest supplier, and I'll let Dean go ahead and speak a little bit to what this is.
Mr. Snyder? Nope. Council, any questions?
Well, yeah, I'll go ahead, I guess. I guess one of my questions is, why didn't this come to the council for approval before it was expended?
We haven't paid for it, yeah.
So this is just being received and filed as a quote?
It's an invoice. This is a material quotes for an invoice, yes.
Well, I'm confused why it's on the consent agenda the way it's on there then, receive and file. Why wouldn't that have been on a regular new business item to approve that expenditure?
I didn't, and I pulled it off for the reason that we have already purchased from Corr and Maine for the last X number of years, and I can't remember anything ever coming to council for a quote or anything like that. It was just built into the street department budget, and Corr and Maine provides all the, I'll get all the terminology wrong, but the catch basins, whatever we need for those improvements. That's why it kinda caught me off guard. Why do we have that out there when our normal procedure is just go out and then buy it, and it comes out under accounts payable department?
So I guess that's partially my bad. Yes, generally, we just order it from Corr and Maine, and, you know, we have a certain amount of inlets or manholes or however many pieces that we need to restock. Since it was over the dollar amount, I suggested it be put in consent just to make sure everything was above board. We were saying like, so basically generally over $15,000, it does come before council. And an individual at the street department purchased a larger amount than expected. So we wanted just to make sure it, it went to council, and we said, hey, you know, this, this happened. Wanted to make sure you saw it. We do need these pieces of equipment. It is the cheapest we can get them, but we did not get two quotes. We're just basically owning that and saying that this happened and.
I can't speak for Mr. Hill, but that's why it kinda threw us off. Where, okay, you filed it, where's the rest of the paperwork says what you did?
That's, because that's all we did, is we ordered that material, more quantity than what was expected was ordered. It's over the 15,000. We wanted to make you aware of it. It is the cheapest we can get it. We know that it is, but.
They're, they're a good supplier, I, I get all that, so.
To document that, so we wanted to make you aware and just make sure everything was above board and, and clear and try to do our best to fix it.
All right.
So the invoice hasn't been paid, but all the materials been ordered and shipped to the street department?
They haven't, not everything has been shipped yet, Mr. Hills.
Because it says date ordered August 16th, date shipped September 27th.
There's still some backorder stuff we haven't received. So it was just, everything over $15,000 we've been bringing to council, just like we've been told. You know, and Eric is, and Bob, pardon me?
That's a requirement for the procurement policy.
And like we've been told, so as a procurement policy, so that's the reason why we brought it today.
Right, but typically, we get those things brought to us before they're even ordered. Not ordered and delivered and then brought to us. That's all I'm saying. I don't know, it just seems, and I'm not trying to throw blame at anybody because I don't know how this all played out. I really don't, but it just seems like we steer away from that procurement policy quite a bit, and it just doesn't seem to really be an issue to anyone. It is to me, but that's why it's in place.
That's why I was pulled off to get an explanation again. Thank you for the explanation, and we'll move on.
Okay, yes. You certainly can.
The motion is to receive and file. Or do you choose to approve that expense?
See, that's a great question.
Two different things, correct?
Because we get a lot of receiving files from contractors that turn beds in, and then underneath of it, there'll be another one to approve one of those.
Materials are different than contracts.
Right.
Right. So the material list, it's just replacing what we burn up through the year. You know, this is our stock items that we carry from year to year, and that's, we've went through a lot of material this year. Normally, this expenditure is a lot less than that, but it prices have almost quadrupled over the last three years. So I, I am sorry, but these prices are gonna continue to raise.
Right, but regardless of how much the prices go up, that's a complete separate issue than bringing things to the council that are required.
Well, that's why we brought it here tonight.
Well, Sue, thank you for bringing that up. Kate, do you want to clarify things?
It's, it's not on the agenda for the council to take any action other than to receive and file.
Okay.
So that's all that we would be doing tonight. If it needs to be approved by the council, if it wasn't previously, then we would have to do that at a different time.
Okay.
So the bottom line, this whole, this whole thing was over 15,000 or 25,000? 24,000? So it fell over yours, but under, it went over above yours.
And his.
But it went to John's, and it was just under that by a whatever.
It's above John's as well. John's is 15.
Oh, that's right, we changed it.
Yeah, yeah.
Forgot, sorry.
It just fell right below having to go out for an RFP.
So in the future, we do plan to bring these type of materials out for RFP per procurement policy. They have gone up quite a bit in the years. We did not expect that we were gonna have this high of a dollar amount on this particular type of item. We did have an individual who purchased that. We have received most of those materials. I put it in, or suggested to Dean to put it in as a receive and file, because that's what we've been doing with emergency spending. I understand this is not emergency spending, and this is just a spending that occurred that is outside of the procurement policy. We agree, we saw it, we wanted to make sure you were aware of it. We're just owning it. That's, that's what we're doing. We're saying, you know, we, we did not follow the policy. We wanted to bring it to your attention, make you aware, and do as much as we could to, to make it.
Correct.
Correct at this point.
Okay. So Sue, do you have it correct, what we are actually voting on?
Receive and file.
Correct. Okay. Is everyone good with that?
Yeah.
All right. Council, take your vote, please. Motion passes seven, zero. Now we have come to item eight point nine. And Eric, would you like to do your presentation on the FY 26 budget discussion for police and fire pensions?
I will, thank you, mayor.
Thank you for letting us go out of order.
No problem. Tonight, I will be providing an overview on the police and fire pension funds from their most recent actuarial reports as it has an impact on the fiscal year 2025, '26 budget. This is an informational item only, so it doesn't require any action or decisions tonight.
Okay.
All right. I'll spend a little bit of time on this first slide here. If you look at that current valuation in the second column, one item is the normal cost. As you see, that's $873,000. And those are the benefits earned by employees in the current year. This is how much you should ideally have funded to maintain a fully funded pension plan. Other items of note are the actuarial value of assets, which is $43.8 million. And that's the market value of the plan assets, and it's smooth for short-term fluctuations. Actuarial accrued liability of $70.3 million, that's a total obligation for past service. And the unfunded actuarially accrued liability of $26.5 million. And that's the shortfall of the assets relative to the liability. You'll also see the funded ratio of 62.32%. This represents how much of the plan's obligations are funded according to actuarial assumptions. Now, as you look at the development of the employer normal cost, member contributions make up $510,000, and the city's portion is $363,000. Now, if you assume some interest on that city portion through the end of the fiscal year, plus this year's portion of the unfunded actuary liability of $2.2 million, the actuaries recommended employer contribution toward the police pension fund is $2.6 million. That recommended contribution is $253,000 more than the recommendation from last year. The required contribution as a percentage of payroll is about 50%, which is a half of the expected payroll for the next year. If this were a fully funded plan at 100%, that would be about 8%. In terms of actuarial assumptions on rate of return on investments, typically actuaries use a 7% target. If you look at the police pension fund, historically, over the last 10 years, they're about 6.33%. So they're a little bit short of that. In FY 2021, the state of Illinois began the Police Officers Pension Investment Fund, which would handle investments for all the downstate pension funds. Part of the effort here was to reduce administrative overhead among all the different funds, as well as increase access to more robust investment opportunities. The state requires a minimum contribution, here reflected as an alternative contribution. The alternative contribution for this year is just over $2 million, and that would cover about 39% of expected payroll. I'd liken this amount sort of like a minimum amount paid on a, or amount due on a credit card. So you might be in compliance when you get to that point and you keep up with those payments, but it's not really making a bigger debt in the overall amount owed on the credit card or in this case pension.
Can I hear that current, to get us funded by 2040, is that the correct amount?
To get us, that would be to a 90% ratio.
So we wouldn't meet the state requirement of being 100% funded by 2040?
Their target would be, be 100% funded via the recommended contribution. I think that was $2.6 million.
Okay.
So the police pension fund, the number of active members is relatively about the same from last year to this year. But one major change that you'll notice is a decrease in the number of tier one employees and an increase in tier two. With that, tier two is a little, is less rich in benefits between the two. So that does have a factor in terms of the overall funding requirements of the pension fund. The actuarial assumptions in this included 2.25% COLA for active members in their calculations. The number of inactive members goes from 68 to 74. Terminated members, as you see here, are individuals who no longer participate in, or who are no longer employed with the city, I should say. Other beneficiaries include dependents as well as surviving spouses. And an overall summary of monthly benefit payments. So within the retired members, disabled members, and those other beneficiaries, the payment per month is about $300,000 a year. Now, the current city policy says that the city of Pekin will fund the police pensions at 103% of the annually required actuarial contributions. So in this case, that would be up $2.1 million. Going through the same exercise with the fire pension, current valuation is about $1.2 million. Fire is just about twice as large of, as the police pension funds. So their actuarial valuation is $35.9 million of assets, 82.1 of liability, and unfunded accrued liability of $46.2 million. Overall, they're about 44% funded. As you look at the development of their employer normal cost, employees pay $507,000, and the employer normal cost is $644,000. Again, assuming a bit of interest through the fiscal year end for the city's contribution, and this year's portion of the amortized unfunded accrued liability of $3.98 million, the recommended contribution, again, that's to get you up to 100% funding in 2040, per Lauterbach, is $4.7 million. The recommended contribution of $4.7 million is an increase of $177,000 from the prior year. To put this in perspective, it's about 86% of expected payroll. Again, looking at historical performance, target being 7%. Fire pension had a little bit of better performance than the police pension fund, but they're still at 6.77%, which is a little lower than the anticipated target. In this case, the alternative contribution, again, that minimum required contribution is $3.9 million, or 72% of expected payroll. The number of active members in the fire pension fund is exactly the same as last year. And the number of inactive members is approximately the same. One item of note, looking at the fire pension fund, is they have 10 disabled members, whereas the police pension fund has two, and that does factor into the actuarial assumptions. And then with the fire pension fund, the monthly spend for their retirees is about $400,000 a year, or a month, I'm sorry. In terms of the policy, since the fire pension fund is a little bit bigger, that liability's bigger, they have 105% funding ratio, whereas the police had 103. And again, at 105%, that amount would come out to about $4.1 million. Looking at the funding sources as it relates to the pensions, there's the personal property replacement tax. Now, the breakout of that tax was first established based on rates set in the 1970s. Now, as we look at the PPRT this given year, now, last year, there was a big decrease that we've seen due to some adjustments through the state of Illinois. This year, unfortunately, we've seen another decrease due to some true-ups in the business income tax payments to the tune of, I think, $962,000. So that has a negative impact overall within the city.
Yeah.
Now, in this slide, it shows the real estate tax levy, the historical tax levies and tax collections based off tax computation reports. Uses 1992 as the base year. Tax year 2023 included a 4.99% increase to the tax levy, this was last year. The city's portion of that levy is $4,000, $4,934,332, which was a 22% increase from the tax levy in the base year of 1992. For comparison purpose, the library levy was increased by 295%. And inflation represented by consumer price index went up 116%. For reference, a tax increase of 4.99% this year would equate to $5,180,555. And again, if you look at this visually, it might be a little easier to, to see the overall impact. This chart that you see shows the growth in the Pekin corporate tax levy compared against inflationary growth as demonstrated by the CPI, and then the overall growth in property values via EAV. Now, this slide is basically a summary of the points that I've been discussing tonight. The table here summarizes the funding requirements for both funds, as well as them combined, under minimum contributions, current city policies, and recommended contributions. under minimum contributions, current city policies and recommended contributions per the Lauterbach and Amon actuary reports. The sources of funding that come toward the pension payments include the applicable portions of PPRT, video gaming fees, cannabis tax, property taxes and other sources. Now, the two questions that have an impact for the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget will be, how much should we contribute to these pensions as well as should we consider increasing the tax levy in order to take a bigger bite into the accrued liabilities here? Now, again, these are some large numbers. I mean, that's understandable, but when you look at it, the question is for the general public, why do the pensions cost so much? And in this case, again, seventy-five percent, as demonstrated in this chart, is just the unfunded liability. It's the underfunding that you've seen over time makes up seventy-five percent. The other twenty-five percent comes from the member contributions themselves and the city's annual proportional part, it's that normal cost that we see. So now, again, digging a little deeper here, if you looked at the full cost of, you know, what these pensions require, be about eight point three million dollars. Now, you won't see eight point three necessarily pop up here, but there's the math behind it. The six point two million dollars between the two funds for that accrued liability plus the employer's normal contribution of one point oh eight, that gets back to that overall, let me check here, seven, seven point two eight million that was in that table a few slides ago. If you were to add in the additional member contributions of one point oh two million, that's where you get this eight point three million dollars. Again, it's a sizable portion with the accrued liability. So one thing to consider, and again, it's not an item that we need to address necessarily tonight, but it does have an impact, is, you know, what do we do with the tax levy? Do we consider an increase to chip into that that liability? Again, if we put this in perspective, if there were a four point nine nine percent increase, the impact on an average hundred and fifty thousand dollar home would be about twenty-three thousand dollars a year. I'm sorry, twenty, twenty-three dollars a year. Again, on this table here, you see the home values and the representative amounts in the increase in the annual tax bill. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or open up for a discussion.
I have a question.
Yes.
I have a question. Perhaps a bit of a history lesson may be needed right now to explain why we have an unfunded accrued liability so high for the police and fire pension.
Well, part of that goes back to, and this is common in a lot of communities where you would come across situations where you have the minimum amount and the recommended amount, usually someplace in between, and it's a question of, you know, what amount of fund, what is the appropriate amount of funding at that time? Again, this is never an easy question necessarily per se, but, you know, sometimes the minimum contribution is is what would go forward or even in situations in the past, if you were funding at a hundred and three percent or a hundred and five percent off of the minimum, you would still have a growing liability that would potentially happen. Now, there are three potential causes of a growing differential between your assets and liabilities. Now, one can be underfunding. The other is, as I was talking about earlier, return on investment, because if you're failing to hit the seven percent mark, there's an impact there. The other thing too is if there's any new legislation that comes from the state that increases the level of benefits, even if you were to fund to the max at that point, you would still have a bit of a liability that grows. So those are usually your three areas that you would see that would cause that kind of issue.
And don't you also agree that municipalities, not just Pekin, but municipalities should have been doing rolling amortization schedule instead of a fixed amortization schedule? You know, when when officers salaries are increasing, somebody might retire at so much money, but a new person comes in and they're not rolling the amortization schedule forward properly, therefore underfunding.
And it's important to keep keep current based upon the actuary levies. The recommended levies that are performed manually by third parties, if we were to follow their recommendations, you would have a more well-funded pension plan. With that said, there it's a balancing act because there's other needs. So I can understand where that happens, but yeah, if that were to be followed, then you would have a higher budget.
We just haven't funded it properly for years and now we're catching up and it's harming very hard, yes.
Eric, also, the number of people on that payroll has a lot to do with the unfunded. For instance, the first city manager here, we had forty-five police and forty-five fire until he left in two thousand four, say. In those last twenty years, we've added almost twenty-five percent to those two payrolls. They're up to fifty-six. Didn't that also make a big, anytime we hire a person, we've got an unfunded liability from day one, correct? When does the unfunded liability start?
Typically speaking.
Does he have to be tenured for ten years or whatever to get draw a pension before the unfunded liability goes up for the increase in payroll?
Usually, when you add the new folks in, a lot of that gets reflected in that normal cost portion that we've seen, that smaller dollar amount and that builds into it. On the unfunded portions, it's usually goes back to what I was discussing before about the either the underfunded portion and the accumulation of that or else the impact of changes at the state level.
And also, at that time, we probably had half the in both payrolls, half the number of people drawing pensions at that time too, because different rules set by the state. But I also have a question, I'm going to go back to the page.
Before you get too much further, can I follow up on from forty-five to our current officers? So I don't want to put you on the spot, Tony, because I realize that our chief is not here, but I'm I'm going to call on you and I'm going to call on Chief Ranny to, do you know off of the top of your head or can you get it fairly quickly for us? When there was forty-five officers, how many calls were made when there was, I don't know how many firefighters, because he isn't talking about firefighters. What has it increased in these last, is he talking twenty years? One of you can go first, if you have it, or you can. I mean, it's not the same world we lived in twenty years ago. I'm just, I want to tell him that.
Well, I'm not saying they weren't needed, I'm just saying that that had hurt our unfunded liability.
There was eight hundred calls versus three thousand.
Because they have to have council approval to go up to those numbers.
I can go. And the last time we had forty-three firefighters was nineteen sixty-one, we had forty-one and in nineteen sixty-six, we had forty-seven. The, my computer's not pulling up, our, our call history, our call has gone up, here we go. In nineteen sixty-one, we ran four hundred and fifty-five calls the last time we had staffing that low. The air, the the time period that Mr. Orick was referencing was the late nineties, I believe. We had forty-eight firefighters in the late nineties. In that same time period, we responded to twenty-three hundred ninety calls that same year. Our last year, we were at fifty-six firefighters and we responded to six thousand nine hundred seventy-seven calls. Obviously, the scope of, and I will speak for the police, but I'm assuming Chief Ranny will agree, the scope of what we do has just expanded tremendously. Another piece of history that I want to throw in, since I've got a hot mic, is I don't know the the police pension fund as well as I know the fire pension fund, but I can tell you in the years nineteen eighty, eighty-one and eighty-two, in that era, there was no, there were no rules as to funding the pensions properly.
You're right.
The actuarial recommendation was in the neighborhood of three hundred fifty thousand dollars to contribute each of those years. The city contributed ten thousand dollars each of those years. And several years ago, just for the the fun of it or to to make me frustrated, we ran it through just a simple, you know, calculator to figure out what that money has cost the fund. And in twenty eighteen, that was around eighteen million dollars that that money would have become just through investment. So, yeah, our pensions are very expensive, but I think it's important to tell the history. And the staffing levels have increased, our calls, the scope of our work has increased. But at the same time, every one of our new firefighters has been paying our portion through our payroll deduction. And today, the chickens have come home to roost for the sins of forty years ago. And in my opinion, it wouldn't be appropriate to lay it at the feet of the current members who are paying their part.
Thank you. Well, and it is.
My only question on that was how it impacted.
I just think it's good for us to all know that. I'd like to let Chief Ranny see if he can come up with some figures or if you don't have them handy, please don't feel pressured.
And that's and that's why I wanted to ask for the history lesson, because I knew I'd been told many, many, many times that the can was kicked down the road.
Eric, try to be nice.
The city of Pekin is not the only one that didn't pay anything or very little back in the seventies and eighties. Every city did it, but we all were paying for it now.
Mayor, I have the some of the police numbers up to twenty-two. I didn't, I not got twenty-three or twenty-four. Two thousand three, there were twenty-one thousand calls for service for the police and then twenty-two, thirty-five thousand, three thirty-one. And again, you know, similar to the fire department, from two thousand three to now, you know, things got a little bit more complex with, you have the safety act, you have mental health components to this, you have the unhoused and a lot of the other things that take a lot more time and a lot of its two-man requirement, in particular with some of the mental health situations that they're on. And, you know, it's changing. It's not, you know, the burglars, it's not the car burglars, now you're dealing with a lot of the unhoused, you're dealing with a lot of the mental health issues and, you know, some of these mental health issues can be two officers for an hour or more on one call when we're trying to get services. That's just on the police side. But and I can get the the numbers on the the last two years, but that's through twenty-two.
No, no worries. I just, I just thought if they had it handy, I think it is a lesson that we need to hear. And you're right, with the mandates that have come down from the state of Illinois with homeless, with mentally ill, we no longer have certain facilities. It has put pressure on our cities and our police officers and our firefighters. And I'm just going to tell you once again, I say it all the time, our police and fire are second to none.
Yeah, I think the manager hit it, but for anything I've was finally able to, the internet worked and pulled it up, but we run about fifteen thousand more calls a year than we did back then and our staffing was pretty similar.
And that's tremendous pressure. I don't know how many people in this room would want to put theirself in line and themselves and their family on the line every day.
We're on track this year to run between thirty-five and forty thousand calls.
Thank you. Yes.
Eric, on page twenty-five, thank you for the page numbers. The growth in EAV. How much of that is in a TIF to where the city won't get it? That EAV there goes to the TIF funds instead of to the city? Is that not correct? A lot of that growth in the EAV is captured to the TIF funds? I just use the example that property tax bill, there was a, the EAV changed for that guy, he had paid seven hundred and eighty-six extra, but it went to the Court Street TIF.
I know that I ran the figures overall, but let me do some investigation of that, because I don't want to give you inaccurate information.
Okay, because I would think that some of that growth in EAV that it's going to go to TIF.
If if member work, if I could clarify one thing, when you were talking about adding staff, you know, to police or fire relative to how the pension, when we were talking about, you know, the impact as to how, you know, that translates into unfunded mandate or unfunded liability, if you added a staff member today, their unfunded liability would be zero. Their unfunded liability a year from now would still be zero because you are paying their entire amount now.
That's right.
The entire unfunded liability goes back to people before you were paying your full amount. So literally, if you double the size of the department today, obviously, there would be cost, but you would have no additional unfunded liability from adding staff.
But our payment to the fund would go up.
Correct, correct. Your payment obviously goes up because that normal cost would go up, but the unfunded part is simply the sins of the past.
Okay, that won't change.
Correct.
So a new person, even though we haven't got him funded.
Well, he is funded. So a new person is a hundred percent funded as you go along.
As you go along.
As you go along.
So they don't count that on a new employee that we have an unfunded liability for him?
Correct. Because that's what that normal cost gets estimated on, is they're already projecting he's worked one year or she's worked one year, they're expected to go twenty, and they're already dropping all those numbers in. The interesting thing to keep in mind is if you laid off every single fireman and every single police officer, you would still have like a six million dollar payment.
Right. It just wouldn't grow.
Well, yeah, but you'd also, no one would live either, right.
Okay, thank you.
Lloyd, I'm working on that.
I understand it a little better.
When Tony mentioned kick the can down the roads, I just heard the other day, they're thinking about kicking it to twenty-fifty instead of twenty-forty, which is typical of Springfield. There are talks are going on, but they haven't acted on it yet. So it may not be twenty-forty a year from now.
I do have one other question then. We have tier one, tier two. If the state would go in and eliminate two, tier two, would that impact our unfunded liability? Okay.
Once again, the state.
Right.
Yeah, they control it all and they fund nothing.
If tier two is eliminated, tier one, since there's, the benefits are richer, there would be an impact there too. And dovetailing on on Bob's point too, with the employer normal cost on the chart with, where it's, well, page of numbers, page numbers, great suggestion. Page twenty-eight, the one point oh eight million dollars, that's where if you had a new member join, they would show up in that bucket.
Yeah.
And then when you get into the unfunded, it's the other portions.
Thank you very much. This was some very, very nice presentation, very nice. Chief, thank you.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I just finally got it to pull up also is, just so for reference, in two thousand four, which I think was the year that was thrown out, we had fifty-four officers and we currently have fifty-seven, but we had fifty-six for the longest time until last year when we added the second SRO. So we've gone up two officers in twenty years.
And those are at the school?
The two SROs are at the school.
And they're seventy-five percent funded by the school.
Correct, the school is paying seventy-five percent of their salary, which is, and their benefits, seventy-five percent of all, their full package.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. You know, we might have interrupted your presentation or were you finished? I know that we kind of jumped to some questions, so thank you. Appreciate it. Does anybody have anything you'd like to say?
I'd just like to commend Eric. This is the best I've ever seen on explaining things and putting the numbers out here. It's really good, especially the page numbers.
How's that for teamwork?
Also, I'd like to thank him for the info you sent today, because that is going to enhance what little knowledge you already had, but also one of the things that came out of this, and I think a lot of the citizens think that it's only coming out of real estate taxes. that it's only coming out of real estate taxes, funding, 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 but the officers in both police and fire contribute to the funding also.
They have to.
And it's about a million, I just rough guessed it, is like a million dollars or somewhere in that category. I think sometimes we forget that they're paying into it also as long as the city is too, so.
David, I think that's a good thing to say, that when you are hired on as an officer or firefighter, you sign on the dotted line that so much of your pay will be going to this pension, and they have no choice. It will be going to a pension.
And they're paying it even though the city might not pay it on that given year.
That part's true too. Well, thank you very, very much. If you are finished, we are. So we do not have executive tonight, but is there any other business to come before the council? Mr. Dossi?
Mayor, I'm happy to report that on the Civic Plus, it is searchable now back to, I think, 1998. We're still working on loading video. That obviously is a lot of data that is getting uploaded. I anticipate that's still going to be at least a week or two. But you can search documents. We've been able to do that now for at least a week or so. I just wanted to make sure before I put it out there publicly that we were getting to the documents, and I've been able to do it, so the public should be able to go back. It's fairly easy to search, so.
Excellent, thank you. Any other staff members? Mr. Dossi?
I polled everybody earlier, and I think...
Yeah, I'll just add that tomorrow is the Health and Wellness Fair at the Moose. So for those of you participating in the screening, this is your reminder to fast for employees, yes. And for those not participating in the screening, we still invite you to come and see the vendors. So hope to see you tomorrow.
Thank you so much. Mr. Hilst?
Couple things. One thing I wanted to ask, and I don't know whoever wants to answer or chime in, but so, it just got me thinking after last week with the issue with the parking and how many times they said that had been to the Traffic and Safety Committee, and then council happened to ask to put that on the agenda for us to have a decision on that. So when a particular request comes in front of the Traffic and Safety Committee, whatever that may be, if the committee recommends to approve that, then that would come to the council for us to vote whether to approve that recommendation or not. If the committee recommends not to approve it, we don't ever see those. Those just kind of stop at the Traffic and Safety Committee where there is no recommendation, rather than bringing that to the council and possibly getting a vote different than what the recommendation is, which has happened several times with the zoning board before. So, and I'm just asking, and anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, why is it that we don't get all those recommendations brought to the council that end up coming in front of the Traffic Safety Committee?
I can answer that for you. I'm the chair of the Traffic Safety Committee. So when I took over as chair, I was told that basically only code changes needed to go to the council. So we have a lot of items, most of them don't come to even if they are approved. If we have a sign that, you know, somebody has a request for a handicap parking sign in the road, that's, this Traffic Safety Committee handles that. Unless it's a code change, those items don't come before council. So even as myself, the city engineer, I could decide to put a sign up where a sign is necessary. It's helpful to have a full group of people to evaluate those type of requests, not just myself, so that I'm being held accountable, but also just to have other people who are knowledgeable about the city and then its needs to be able to make those decisions on behalf of the city. So there are, you know, several members who make those decisions. I feel that we are capable of making those fairly simple decisions as a group. If council wants to direct that all items of Traffic Safety Committee come to the council, that will be a lot more work for the committee, but that, if that, you know, that's your choice.
Do we have any citizen representation on that committee?
We have in the past. He just recently resigned, so we will be looking for a new member as a citizen.
So typically, there's one on there?
Typically, there's been one.
Okay.
Nice. Good question.
Okay, so I'll just, I may have some more on that later, but I just want to get a overview of that, because I don't even know who's on that committee, to be honest with you. But just got me thinking after that whole issue last week. And then just one other thing, not specifically business related, but we were fortunate enough as a football team to get a home first-round playoff game this year. So we'll be playing Friday night at home at 7 o'clock, if anybody wants to come out and watch.
Woo-hoo, thank you.
With the credit card.
Very good. Okay, Mr. Abel?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, Karen, nothing at this time. Mr. Nutter?
Just everybody be careful out trick-or-treating as the police department has put out multiple notices. Thank you very much. Don't know what the weather's going to be. It might be 80, it might be 20, don't know.
Who knows?
Who knows? And Josie, thank you for all the updates on Court Street. I know it's been like a chess game moving those little barrels around everywhere, so. But the end is getting a lot closer on that.
It's definitely getting closer. We're hoping to be paving again maybe Friday. I will keep you updated on Facebook as we've been doing in the past, but definitely stay tuned. Probably either Friday or Monday, we'll be paving again, and then pretty soon putting on that final layer of asphalt, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Mr. Orick?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Mr. Onkin?
I talked to some of the council about this before the meeting. On Sunday at the mausoleum, they had kind of an open house type deal where you could walk in and there were some students that had individuals in the history of Pekin, talked about those individuals and what their historical value was. It was just, it was a neat, it was a neat thing to do. I had an opportunity to go through the mausoleum, and it's kind of a neat place to see in a morbid sense, but, no, I think Terry Gambetti was kind of spearheaded it, and it was a real nice opportunity.
Very good, very good. I don't have much to say other than I was going to say, Josie, thank you very much for the streets. It is getting done. Court Street is wonderful. I keep hearing it out there that lanes are changing, but it is, every day, there's an improvement. So thank you very much. Chair, would now entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion to adjourn.
Do we need a roll call? Okay, thank you. Shelley, I want to say something to you for relief.